No, it's not my bill.
Hello, yes, hold on a sec.
How you doing?
We should get an A tag.
I'm gonna go sniff a little water. Scott, you don't need that?
I've got some here, I should grab mine too. But thanks.
Yep.
What do you need?
So compared to what you advised previously, this is the way the version is over.
That's the, oh, for the regular purpose statement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Awesome, it's a little nicer step in there, but that's what she thought would be best, so that's... Did you get one yet, Mary?
I did not. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Excuse me.
Get that off there? Yeah, not as bad as the other day. Right? Came out of the shloppin'. Shoes.
Is what tomorrow?
What is your schedule like tomorrow?
It's not looking too bad. Gotta run to Sanborn for meeting at 7:00.
He's in there?
And then, yeah. Yeah, yep, yeah, I should have time tomorrow. And I don't know how long that meeting, like I said, I know it starts at 7:00, but is it? Wheat, yeah. Right. Do you want, do you want it on that one, or the one for the sprint? He's known by the time this one comes up.
That guy never did come back in for that.
I, I can look, I can see what we're doing.
Yeah.
Not really did. But I, I thought he was born behind the other car. This is behind the garage now, so he's alright.
He's alright.
It's a, it's a, you said, done. Like it's in Sean Good.
Okay.
This looks better. The garage looks even rough.
Yeah, he said, you didn't present, he goes, yeah, go ahead. He goes, okay, and I can fit two of these, like mine, I can put two of these.
Yep, it's small.
They're completely nice and big.
Sure. You bet, yep.
Not the true. How are you, Lexi?
September.
You're good.
We have to overlook our main phone, it's mine.
Oh, she's not, I'm not calling her, you were just saying the phone call. Oh, that's good.
She's having one of her own.
Just work, just work.
Oh, okay.
They don't, they don't need all right.
I told him if he had to go, he had to get his head down, and then he called her.
Called my mom. Oh, what's this for?
Is Carol back?
She's gonna be in the morning.
We'll keep you informed on that.
That's one, but it's one fly.
Yeah. Oh, we got it.
Yay!
That's probably the last one.
Okay, go. That's my friend.
I, I did a bunch of smoking.
I was last, not last, I was something before, I was in a house. It was getting ready, the dogs were raining. I bet you we have flies in the house. We have one fly. I, I grew up on a farm.
Oh, yeah, I'll be there, welcome in the afternoon. Yeah, I'll probably say your name.
Yeah, exactly. Alright. I talked with Carol this morning.
Yeah.
Told her about things we discussed.
So you don't resent that I just gotta say?
Is it okay?
Or you want me to read the whole thing? You, uh? Like you agree? Well, I couldn't, no, that's not yet. Yeah, that's somebody. Yeah, yeah, just wanted to roll through them. My phone, or what?
No. You started the meeting, sorry? Almost. Oh, five thirty, almost. Hi, Steve. Alright, I got five thirty, we'll call the meeting in order. Please rise and remove your caps for the president's lead. No!
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with the ready and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with the roll call. Steve Hearn?
Here.
Carol? Jay Jones?
Here.
Lexi Murphy?
Here.
And Jeanne O'Rough?
Here.
Your quorum? First item is to approve our agenda for tonight.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Motion by Lexi, second by Jeanne, to approve the agenda for August 15th, regular meeting. If you have any further discussion or questions? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried, agenda approved. Now comes time for our oath of office. To officially install Scott Wise as city manager clerk.
I, Scott Wise, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa. I will faithfully and partially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of the office of Paulina City Clerk Manager in Paulina, as now as thereafter required by law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, for item number six, you just have your treasurer's report you may review. We do not need that approval at this time, we are proceeding with the... Thought we were looking lost. We will have the treasurer's first coming up at a later date, as provided. So at this time, that is just for reference. So if you have any questions, you can let Scott know those, and we'll pass that on and get that answered for you. So we don't need to do anything with that, that's as is, and now we are up to item number, agenda number seven, approve the August 1st minutes, meaning that's a certain green. Any questions on anything, or? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the August 1, 2022 minutes.
Motion by Jeanne, she has a second, to approve the August 1st minutes, as included in your packet. Is there any other questions or discussion? Lexi, do you need a minute yet, or are you still looking?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm working.
Ready, okay.
Yep.
It's all in favor, then, of approving the August 1st, 2022 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carried. Approve the payment of claims. That should also be included there. Any questions related to those?
I'm going to approve the claims list.
Jeanne, you have to approve the payment of claims. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Steve. Motion by Jay, second by Steve, to approve the payment of claims as stated here for July. Do you have any other questions or comments? Call for a vote, all in favor of approving payment of claims as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carried. Number nine is to approve the Class C liquor license, Class C beer permit, Class B wine permit for Casey's, 2222 North Clark. Pending approval by the Iowa Beverages Division. Copy of it there in here. Is this just the yearly?
Yes.
I'll make the motion for it, so.
Lexi?
I'll second.
To approve, Jay, who has the second. So a motion by Lexi, and a second by Jay, to approve the Class C liquor license, Class C beer permit, Class B wine permit, for 222 North Clark Street, for Casey's Marketing Company, pending approval by the Iowa Beverages Division. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay, that's all ayes. Motion carried, permit, liquor license approved for Casey's. Once it passes, Iowa Beverages Division has. Alright, and moving on to reports, item 10. So we have had multiple records requests, and we have status reports. To clarify that they are status reports, I am not providing you with records requests, I am providing the requister. So that is now clarified. I did provide you and others with the status report dates as to what some of those have been requested, and what stat, what point they are in, as to who's responsible at the moment, who has them, if it's been done, whether it was paid, all of that, those are out on the outside bulletin board there, outside city hall. You can also ask any questions of myself or your question, should you need to, or our legal counsel. Grimgar would like to have a workshop with us, on a, probably on a Wednesday kind of evening, is there a favorite night, about the second week? We are probably going to get together and discuss an agenda and what to talk about, and to set a date for that, so it's not anything to burn your calendar yet. But let me know off, off after this, if Wednesdays are out entirely, or after a certain month, or whatever. I just wanna get some...
At night, you said?
Yeah. So we'll look into that, and we'll keep you updated, but they have expressed wanting to talk about our collaboration with the crews that we've been doing, and trying to have all of us benefit as two smaller communities to co-share resources and talents, so that we can better serve our citizens. We do not have a city attorney here to report anything right now. And the city manager clerk has his first report as well. Would you like to share with us tonight? That you're doing the newsletters, running through it?
Yeah, we've got the newsletter, everyone should have that in their packet. There are a few, we got the dates in for the heavy appliance, or the, I guess, the junk pickup weekend. You just double check the dates on that. We did follow up with the trash company. They are available on, I believe it was September 10th, I think?
October 10th.
October 10th, I'm sorry. Yep, yep, they said they would have, they would be available for that day, so.
A little later than normal, I don't know.
First week of October, so. I think it worked pretty good the last time, didn't it? I never heard any complaints.
No, I didn't either.
I was gonna say. Yeah, but you Kelly did it, it seemed like it worked a lot better. It was a lot less junk, yeah.
So if you have any other, that is not officially out yet, sleep printed yet, if you have any comments, I know Lexi mentioned something too, make sure you give those to him here tonight or tomorrow. He's going out in the...
Yeah, we'll be going out, we'll be going out with it. And like I said, if, if the dates don't match up right, but I believe I got everything, all the dates and everything in there correct, but just another set of ayes doesn't hurt.
Yep.
And then also, there will be a change how the sticks, tree limbs will be picked up. We're going with a, the initial, if you wanna say a small pickup load, will be picked up for free, and any other load after that will be fifty dollars per, per truckload. So if there's excessive tree limbs lying around, like I said, the first one will be considered a small pickup load, and then after that, it will be fifty dollars per moment.
Just got to get something official out there on that, so that will be communicated and...
Can I ask a question about that? Would that include after, for like storm damage or something?
No, storm damage is considered, will be handled separately. This is just if somebody goes out and does some tree trimming.
Questions or directives, Scott? Alright, moving ahead to our superintendent of utilities, Kelly.
Well, we've been changing, cutting edges on some of the equipment. We did two days' worth of jet and severs, just preventative maintenance, the ones we usually have problems with. The radiator on the sweeper, we had to replace that. Hooked up Potabond's electric over on Broadway and Wood. Trims some trees, unhooked and rehooked clothsins, pulled stumps uptown, there's three of them, three trees we cut down. Fixed the waters, pick it up the rez that we use for testing. Finished painting at the school. Painted lines at Zion Presbyterian Church, framed the crosswalks on Maple, and for the bike trail. Swept streets. Stripped the Paulina lettering off the old ambulance. Locates. Located the bad curb stops around town we need to replace. Picked up sticks, put new filters on at Lagoon Air Compressors. Met with Beck Engineering about the water treatment plant. We had the fire extinguisher inspection. Brought, put a new meter in at Ed D Brown's. Pulled wire behind HopeX, got that all hooked up, Zach HopeX, changed oil on the Equinox. Finished painting the white, went in bigger shade than line shade.
How is seeing your power trees out, um, the ashtray trees? Are you still working on the monitor?
It's gonna be, yeah. We'll concentrate that, we'll stay this fall and winter, we'll start cutting down a bunch. Got any work, questions about this, or? Were there questions about the DGR estimate?
So that'll take care of all switchgear, everything that we need to move ahead to make this the way it should be down the road, do we want to do any upgrades or anything?
Yep, we're gonna leave room for generation, if we ever get a generator, there's gonna be an extra slot in case we ever need more. And, yeah, it'll just be a small building connected to the substation there. At some point, we could do something with the three buildings that are there.
Do we have to get rid of that, do we have to get rid of that thing that I combined? Scott, we're gonna get one part of it, replace it? Or we're gonna get some of the other?
That was gonna be a new transformer.
Are we, are we, is it gonna, sometime down the road, are we gonna have to change our, our voltage system, our high voltage system, to a different, to upgrade, or?
It would be nice, yeah. And everything they do here won't?
That won't affect that, if we, if we wanted to upgrade that substation down the road, okay.
But that will help with all this, with doing that?
It'll clean everything up.
How much more would it, do you think it'd cost to just do the, the upgrade to the high voltage, at the same time, another million?
You'd have to get a new substation transformer, and then you'd have to replace...
Same here, transformer.
Every transformer in town. Except the ones that, the big ones I have ordered lately have gotten new voltage ones, so those, those ones will be fine, but other than that, it'd be every transformer in town that'd have to be replaced.
So are we gonna be on the fourth of May to create again, or are we just gonna help like, what?
That's what I'm wondering, with all this clean energy thing that he's gotten. Is there any grant money for?
I think, yeah, I'm sure there's stuff out there, I don't know. I guess we haven't gone that far looking and whatnot yet. I think DGR would be, I think they know what's out there, and be able to help us as much as they can do if we move forward.
And Perp already did that, right?
I think they did theirs in 2003.
What's the timeframe for the sell off?
Maybe it'd be, I think it'd be a year before we could get the switchgear, so I mean, there would be something we could start paying, if you wanted to now, and get a lot of it paid off in the next couple of years before the big build comes, I guess. A lot of that equipment's gonna take a while to get. Just 'cause it, that's the world we live in right now.
Is this something we have to get special funding for, or do we have to do?
We will look at that, we just wanted to give you that initial...
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think because the electric pump was, it was usually like a couple million, but we don't wanna drain that down.
Let's see, I just, we know the time card and how long it takes to get things, and that...
Oh, this is gonna happen tomorrow, we know that.
And this is something we should get a, then we can interrupt you, but, um, working through some type, one of the engineering firms that help them.
Yeah. To do it so it's right, so that we do, like Steve says, go to a higher voltage system, it's all compatible. Make sure it's all.
Any more questions on that? We had a gentleman stop last week about the GIS, he has software that we can start mapping our hydrants, the flow on our hydrants, that we can start mapping where our water lines are, our sewer lines are, where everything's located. So when we get locates, and when we get, right now, we go to the lens building and look at a map from 1950s and...
No one knows where you think it is in this town.
How much, did he ever give you a full?
They had something here.
Oh, did I just find? Oh, that's so...
It'd be fifty-seven hundred dollars for the startup, that's the tablet and the...
So they're gonna come in and map everything?
We would do it ourselves.
Okay.
And then it'd be sixteen hundred dollars, I think it's a thousand dollars a year for the, for programming the tech support and whatnot, and then it's six hundred dollars a year for the, um, what do you call it?
Subservise.
Subservise, yeah.
So what, which budget would you think this could allocate to primarily, the sewer?
I mean, you could take it out of electric, water, sewer. Those three for sure.
I have a question. Since water is kinda a key to our project, how compatible is that with other softwares? And getting reports?
As far as?
Well, like, all our I'm responding stuff, we have all the hydrants on that, so is it easy to get reports out of that software, so I can keep our stuff up to date? Because we have to do that with ISO also.
Yep, we can, yeah, we can take as many pictures as we want for like every hydrant, and we can write as many notes as you want. We can... The way the guy made it sound to me, it was a pretty neat deal.
Because I'd like to number all the mains, so when we would hook the hydrant, we know where we can go to a different hydrant for a different main, which some of the older department on the fire department would know what to go to, but that's tribal knowledge, so.
Yeah, I mean, it, it could be something that you could have, you could pull it up yourself on a tablet, and it can tell you what's where and what.
Just, it'd be nice to keep everything in it working, so.
Does he, does, do you have this?
No, so all, all of our hydrant information right now is probably off of the 1950 map with the spiral notebook that has all the flow tests. And that was plugged into our I'm responding, so.
And we could say he could come in for a presentation.
If you guys want a presentation, that guy could come in and...
That'd be a good idea, thank you.
I just wanted to show it to you guys and let you know he came in and...
How long will it take to get everything in the free one, or do you think they have to care?
I think, I think if we went with this, I think it'd be... I think, I think if we went with this, I think it'd be... Yeah, something, yeah.
You know, ultimately the map is a, is a resource for them, but unfortunately there's been some additions in this town, like the west, west lot addition and out at the, uh, other east lot addition that has, is not on that map. So that, I mean, something like this would be good for them to have, and then there are some things that have been changed and some water mains that have been rerouted in this town also that could, that are not on that map, so, um, yeah, something like this would be good.
And I'm sure you'd be able to GPS your, if you have a repair, you'd be able to GPS right where that repair's at.
Definitely, with the lead copper thing coming up, we can, we can mark what's been changed out, what's not been, we can, you know, before, we can go as far as we want with it, like, from what the guy said.
I think it's a good, yeah, because we're getting the why we're going over.
Yeah.
Where it is, 'cause I know, I lived in my own house, I had a sewer line running out of the corner of my house, you know, we knew about, you know, and then they, when they put that street in, they had to come in and, you know, do some funding.
You know, Sean is an example, when he has locates or whatever, when they're around, he can just pull all their stuff up on his tablet and he knows exactly where, what he's got where and, you know, it's, it's useful.
Do you have like the same system?
Yeah, I just wanna be real simple.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion that we do this and take out the electric water in general, but I would still like a presentation.
I'll send it back.
Okay, you have the motion by Lexi, second by Jay, to approve the service agreement pending the presentation, or Silver Smith data to add GIS asset status tracker to our, our outdated system and mapping. Any other questions or discussion? Obviously, what that could be saved for the Silver Smith gentleman, who will come back and answer those and Kelly at the next step, but at this point, we don't have anything and anyone approves, or everyone is interested in taking a vote, all in favor of doing that, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. It's all ayes. We have approval to proceed with him to have, well, maybe our next or the next one too. See what we can do now.
Okay.
See what we can find out more, that's excellent. Okay, police, where are they at?
Last Tuesday was the annual shop that the cop put on with Logan, Sheldon, and Officer Morton was in attendance for us. You guys anything further to add, how it went?
All went really good, we kind of did a combined thing for grand industry, so there's a lot more kids, but more departments too. A lot of officers showed up, a lot of kids showed up, and a lot, pretty good, I don't know of any compliance, so.
Anything else to add?
Nope.
Anything coming up in the next week or two before our next meeting?
Nothing more.
No? All right, fire, we have Ryan here.
Yep. Taylor and I, Matt with Carol, or Gene, Carolyn emotional status. We discussed, um, self to old ambulance. At the start of all this, we didn't really think this would be an option, looking into purchasing that or however we move forward. So we've talked about it a little bit at our last meeting, and it's something we wanna look into, um, way to actually be replacing one of our other vehicles with that, so we wouldn't be adding another vehicle to the fleet. So, it's kind of a compromise. So we have a chief's pickup now that is in, almost thirty years old, that is needing a little bit of maintenance to it, and we've never solved our issue of our old red van that's a storage locker outside the building due to the, our lack of storage space, so, we gained a little bit on both sides of that. So, yeah.
So are you selling Chief's truck?
Sell the chief's truck and that red van could be...
The rescue van?
Yeah, the rescue van could be auctioned off, and then we also need to start the thought process of what we're doing with the ninety-one pumper, because September, October, we're looking at in service for our new pumper. So, that's one other vehicle that we need to get out of our building, so.
So we don't, we probably don't wanna sell the ninety-one pumper yet till you get your pumper, correct?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Or?
I, I think we need to start the discussion of what we wanna do with it, because, yeah.
Is it a workable condition?
No.
No, okay.
I mean, other than driving down the road, I mean, we can kinda fill tankers out at the, uh, lake with it, but not at a productive rate, so, for the most part, it's, we've had it out of service and we use it for road block or on a accident, so if somebody crashes into something, one that doesn't really work, so.
Feel like we'd go mutual aid before we fixed to use that?
Yeah, so, well, we're, we're automating, you know, with Grandville so much that, and that's kinda why we're going, switching gears a little bit. Like right now, if we would have a structure fire or a long, uh, drawn out accident, we have no place to get out of the weather, so at least the old ambulance would have some type of command area for us and get out of the weather, so.
Make it like a command center.
Yeah.
You oughta, you oughta think about putting, when I worked a maintainer, they had, they built those, those rescue vehicles up there.
Yeah.
Rock, uh, rapids.
Yeah.
And, uh, they put lights on the, on, on pod.
All lights?
That you could, that you could lift up.
Yeah.
You see the light, yeah.
We, we have a light tower on their new truck.
Yeah.
For as much as we paid for that, it's gonna be up in the middle of the days, so.
But, but that's, they put them on there, yeah, look at maintainer's ones, 'cause they...
Yeah.
They, they're, that's they built, they didn't build a, you know, they built like a, like what you want.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, I'm looking at it because our main focus still is putting all our money to a new building, so I'm trying to accomplish most of our goals without, hopefully.
Can we just give that to them for, and move it over, or do we have, since they're a separate?
It's a piece of financial.
Name for a dollar?
Yeah, the thing is being a dollar.
Yeah, 'cause they're a separate entity, aren't they?
We'll have to look into that for transferred properties, we have to ask Tish.
Yeah.
The city owns, technically owns everything we have.
Like anytime they get a truck or wanna get rid of something, they go straight to the city.
Yeah, the city owns it, yeah.
So I think it should be.
It should be, yeah, we should be able to.
Just a matter of that is the ambulance, are they expecting to count their income?
What the ambulance people say?
I haven't even talked.
We haven't talked about that.
We, we literally talked about this Monday night at a meeting, I brought it to my safety committee, and they said they wanna talk about it here, so.
'Cause I don't think we're gonna get that much out of that thing, 'cause like, there's a lot of using this as our own.
You wouldn't be at the power cot, for example, we could still...
Yeah, we could sell that if we needed to.
I think, and it could come in handy at a, at a fire or a C two with, you know, with the extra seating in there and...
Like I told them, I don't plan to have any cot into it because I don't want anybody to think it's a transporting ambulance. Um, our goal is to have...
What do you have, where do you?
An advanced first aid kit in there and an AED, so if the ambulance would be out on a call, we could respond as a first responder to the non-transporting until another ambulance could get there.
I think that's a good idea, and I don't think we're gonna get much out of it.
I would maybe, do need to talk to maybe like Lori and, and see, you know, are, are they, I guess it's probably more up to us than them.
Yeah, I mean, it's the city, the city owns it, so.
The city owns it, but they're probably thinking that they could get some money out for their side.
Probably just to, for open conversation, we probably wanna communicate.
Yeah, it's communicable, so they don't...
Carol and I could do that. When she gets back, we could talk too.
I think it'd be less hassle trying to get rid of it too, 'cause it's gonna...
And that would maybe hopefully, you said, oh, it's still more to get rid of than after that, this pile of things.
Yeah. Big iron or whatever.
Yeah.
Now, that, when you're talking about that ninety-one, that's the big pumper truck thing?
Uh, it's not the four door, it's the other one.
Oh, that's, that older one, okay, and that's down into the fire station?
Yeah, that's in the fire station.
And then you think that, like, Chief's truck just kinda like...
That's been, we've had that for a long time.
Yeah.
'Cause I think Northern Natural gave that to us.
Yeah, Northern Natural gave that to us and...
It looks great, but...
Nine, it's a ninety-three and we got it in like ninety-seven, ninety-eight, 'cause that's right when I joined the fire department, but they're color changing it and all that, so. So, yeah, it's, I mean, I'm grateful that Northern Natural did that for us, I mean, that's given us a lot of years of good service and stuff. We're trying to redirect and improve with the times, so.
So that vehicle would not be needed or something to replace it, you understand, it's not?
We're gonna just sell it?
Yeah, just sell it.
Once we know more.
I have, if we had a big building, I would try to keep the ninety-one as a, I've seen some different, uh, fire prevention stuff done with trucks like that, that take the pump panel out and put a grill in there and then put TVs on it, so, but we don't have the storage space right now, so it can go down the road too. I'm, the chassis is good, it's just the pump, the pump is bad, aren't it?
So that's something that we thought like an option?
Yeah, yeah, you could do big iron, or there's purple blade, there's several different equipment auction sites, so.
Why don't you, yeah, coordinate with him on that once you're, you guys have decided that that's the way you want to think about going to ambulance, is it okay?
Carolyn on the top too. Ambulance people?
Yeah. Speaking of maybe a bulk, a bulk record, no?
Sometimes.
'Cause then I'm thinking if you're at the ambulance, you could say, well, instead of this amount, you now have this amount, but it's maybe somewhere equitable perhaps, three vehicles for one, but it'll help us financially decide some of those things there.
Yep.
Okay. Awesome, anything else to share with us?
Last, last week.
All right, and Gene, did you wanna add anything about the ambulance, I know you guys have got the...
Uh, no, we...
Tied to this.
Not really, no.
Okay, okay. All right, any committee reports necessary tonight? Has anyone reached out to say to add to it yet? I know somebody still need to meet and talk about some things?
No report from employee, employee committee.
Okay.
No report from public safety. Or the...
No building, no building permits.
Say there wasn't a whole lot there on the...
Oh, I had a good suggestion from a citizen for the airport, since it's, we are like in agronomy community, maybe for the terminal out there, we could go with a grain bin. Just a suggestion.
Air, B and B it.
Get ahold of that guy over in Kelly.
Well...
See lost one?
See lost one.
Guess you've got a spare grain bin, so you're gonna find this handy here too, though.
Yeah, but I'll tell you a little bit about the grain bins, like, the costs, the cost of a grain bin doing that is gonna be as much, if not more, as if you put a, a wood structure out there.
Okay.
So you really...
The thing about it, you gotta, we gotta build on top of their existing, they almost because of the sewer and all that, or we're running a lot of money.
Yeah, it, I mean, it's a unique thing, but the labor involved in it, um, the, the cost of the structure, but then the labor involved in it is used up more than if you would just build a conventional building. But, yes, that's, that's a...
Could we go like with a modern building, or? I mean, not...
I think, I think we could build on top of the existing concrete, and I think we could make it smaller, we could cut out some of that concrete and put a footing on one side, you know, dig down, make it smaller, we don't need it that big, doesn't have to be as big as it is now.
I think like if we do get a house out there, I think they, the pilots out there would Airbnb it and stay out there, because they literally stay in archers at an Airbnb, and they don't have, like, there's no laundry, there's no nothing, there's nothing they have in there, so, I mean, if we put a house out there, I bet you, people would Airbnb it and fly in and do stuff around here and Airbnb it when they're not using it.
Yeah, I talked to some of those pilots out there.
Yes, 'cause I, I did their laundry, because they did not have a washer and dryer, so...
What, what some of those pilots run into is the elevator, at one time, um, loaned them a vehicle to drive back and forth to wherever they were staying that night. They don't do that anymore because of liability. So those pilots, when they fly in, they have to rent a car, they have to find someplace, they have to find a way to get transportation, two-wheel transportation, 'cause they fly in there, that's their vehicle. Uh, ultimately, what would be really neat to do when Cherokee does this is, uh, they don't have a place for them to stay, 'cause obviously they have hotels that are, um...
But they leave a vehicle out there.
Yes, they leave a vehicle out there for a courtesy car, um, it's an old, old city police car that they use out there. And anybody that flies into that airport can use that, use that vehicle if it's available.
Who does this?
Cherokee.
Cherokee.
What's the liability on that, though, if somebody comes and flies in and gets drunk and hits somebody, kills somebody in that vehicle?
Well, that I don't know, that...
That is, that is a common airport practice for...
It was for years, yeah, I know that, they've had for years in the airports, the cars in there, but it's, you know...
I mean, that's something we'd have to look into if we were gonna go down, you know, look at that. We definitely have to look into liability, um, but yet, they, they do, um, they need an office space because they'd set up their, uh, internet and they set up their terminal, the computer terminals to do their work from that, so they need an office space, um...
And they have a TV for like weather?
They need a TV for weather, so they can watch their weather, um, some of that they can get off the internet. And they also need restroom facilities and places to, you know, wash up and, um, and there's a lot of times where they at least need, at minimum need a lounge area, because there's a lot of times in the morning, they go out early and spray, and by eight or nine o'clock in the morning, they're winded out and they can't go any longer until later in the afternoon, so they just hang out there. They really can't go anywhere because they don't have a vehicle, so they just hang out there, um, in the lounge area. So those are some of the things to consider, what would, it would be nice to have a nice structure there for them to use, plus if we have visitors come in, fly in and use.
Yeah, and they can use it on the office.
So anyway, that's just some ideas.
Sounds fun, I should definitely look into.
So right now, do we charge them rent to use that building?
We charge them to use the whole facility per acre.
Per acre.
And I think the last time we contracted it, it was thirty-five cents an acre.
I believe it's still thirty-five cents.
It is thirty-five cents.
Yeah, on acre sprayed.
Yep, so then, so then next, next spring or maybe this fall, um, for the, for the next fiscal year, we maybe wanna reconsider and increase that acre charge on the contract, that's something we can... That's something we can, but yes, we do charge them, we do get.
And they do need the phone out there. I did ask that, yep.
Steve, Steve Loscher used to oversee it, did he?
Yes.
Yep.
Because that phone is off internet, off the internet that we provide out there, so if one of their phones would go down, then they have a phone to call.
Makes sense.
So anyway, that's some of my observations for the airport committee.
Meeting here, we were going to wait until they, uh, Brian came in after spraying season here to kind of give us an update and details on their financial side of it, but some of the other challenges they face out there, I know coming into winter here too, we've gotta look at that building, no matter what we do, but we're not doing anything that fast, we need to secure the windows and
Yep.
shore it up a little bit. A little take care out there. Okay, anything on nuisances? I didn't see anything on the list, so that's.
Can I go back to me ones?
Go back to you, yes, we always go back to you.
Our bigger truck is done and Thursday, I got a plane ticket for three hundred bucks to fly to Milwaukee to go get it, so. That'll be done Thursday, Friday, going to get the truck. Steve is gonna take a couple days, vacation and come with me, so.
Should you talk to that guy about maybe buying that, the old Digger Ring off down?
We're actually dealing with his wife right now, he is in the hospital, not doing too good, so. We're just gonna.
Because that's, like I said, if we can get rid of that, the old Digger Ring.
I thought it may be just taking the bigger part off the truck and then maybe selling that on big iron and see what happens and then, uh, then make the truck a two-way dump truck.
Dump truck and make it work into a snowplow or something, you know, work its way in. We just get a dump truck. Because like I said, it doesn't come, it never go out.
No, it's a, it's a good truck yet.
Yep. I'm grooming myself for the entire.
That's exciting, I can't wait to see it. Anything on another match reports?
Did it happen driving back?
No, there's any on building permits on the list either?
No, there's nobody there. The more we did, the sooner I remember.
There was just an extension of what he.
What do you have?
What he had before, so.
Um, for parks, um, I was approached by, by Gal from out Pickleball. I know it's getting more and more popular and, I mean, just what I've seen about it, they're, tennis is not as popular as it used to be, they're converting a lot of tennis courts, but I know at the school, with the Swanson and the, um, down here at the school, they've all been converted to parking lots now. And I just said I would bring it up if there's, um, anything we can do or consider, or if anybody has suggestions.
Now, they, you put two pickleball courts in one tennis court, right? Isn't that how it works? So the problem, the problem we have up there is that, once you put those posts in there, it takes away the parking lot up there.
Right, so that's not a good condition for that either.
Yeah, it's pretty much shady, isn't it?
So I don't know much about pickleball, but if you had one pickleball court, how, how, how big of an area would it take?
That, that I don't know.
Okay.
It, it's, it's, they use half.
Yeah, about half.
Half of the tennis court.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not familiar with that either.
You can drive on the tennis court up there.
Yeah, is that one tennis court or is that two tennis courts?
There's two. The one here, the one, I guess down at the school is two, and I believe it's two courts up at the Swanson complex.
So.
One of them would give you.
About a fourth of that up at the Swanson complex would be what they would need for a pickleball. Could we, I mean, just throw this out, could we do something at the city park?
That's what I was wondering too.
Would we have space?
Or slab down there?
Yeah.
I got a question about the city park. All right, Kelly, here we go. Can we put somehow, don't say it again. Can we somehow put electric in one of those, so like if people bring crack laws, they can plug them in? And put like a light, like, you know, if they wanna.
Where?
Nothing's not light.
Under the shelters?
Under the shelter, like, just put like a, electric to plug into like a, so they don't have to run an extension cord all the way. I mean, is that, is that simple? Is that something simple? Is that kind of cool? Or is it possible or not?
It's possible, yeah. We probably just run off the scout house. It would be terrible.
Is that something we can, I mean, we don't have to do it this year, because obviously it's probably gonna be, but maybe something that we can do next. Next year, if people wanna have family out, then maybe can, or no.
Where does the power come for the, for the lights there in the park? Where does that come from?
From the ballpark lights? From what lights?
The park, you mean the park lights?
There's lights down the park that come out of the scout house.
There's two meters on the side of the scout house.
Okay.
Just an idea, I can look for all that to my attention as we can.
Says a pickleball court is thirty by sixty.
Thirty by sixty.
Which if you have the stuff on the side to do that.
And then the net, I mean.
It says, it says a tenth foot margin around surrounding margin. So it's maybe forty by sixty-four is what it says.
So I hope that I can guess. We should definitely put into a plan here, our committee for that can maybe look into both of those to put on the agenda and get on there.
Just let me know, just let me know how many outlets you want and.
Can you do?
Well, like, huh?
Did you, you can do that?
Yeah.
I didn't know if you actually had. I already got how many you want.
I was the one, we were the ones.
They found their own stuff, they were just, you know, like, where are we on?
Then get with Kelly and go down the truck.
Extension cord to rent somebody's house?
Just gonna have people pirating it.
That's what I was just thinking, have a way to lock it out.
Right.
Or could you put a meter on it, you, just like a parking meter, you just feed it? I mean, well, like you said, at least you wouldn't have someone going down there and
Yeah.
you know, except pirating the electricity, you could.
Hmm, that's what I was thinking of.
You could have it on a timer and it shuts all off at ten o'clock at night or.
Oh, yeah.
That'd cross my mind, but that's not terribly difficult to defeat either. I mean, I can give in words ad and what the neighborhood is like, and I already know that house would be running a cord.
There goes our free, free utilities, right?
Or is it maybe something that you, like, you ask for, like, you put something like for donation, I don't know. We have to think of a law, law.
Maybe we could ask around a few other towns to see what, how they handle.
I'm originally from Sibley and they have outlets in there.
I was gonna say.
And they have weights.
What do they do out at the lake?
They don't have, they don't have lakes and there's no plug in down there.
No plug in down there, okay. What would people still look for? What, where, where could they take it? Charge your own or?
Take, take three, three hundred foot of extension cord.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Light up their garage.
He's gone though.
I don't know, it's just an idea, we don't have to do it this year, there's something we can bring, so I'm gonna do it next year.
I mean, it's, we runs, we run lights in that park at night, at the city expense electricity. And I feel that if, it would just be a benefit to our community, even if we didn't charge anything for it, they're not gonna use a whole lot of electricity if they plug something in and have a, a couple lights in them. It's not gonna amount to a lot of electricity.
And there's no lights underneath the shelter. And that does take much, put a couple lights through the ceiling there, you know. Motion lights and they won't.
Be secure to get them, there's no problem. You can have motion lights under those things, so.
Yeah, a light under. Yeah, and then somebody could, could just see something in the surround down there.
Yeah.
Good security, public safety. Six more seconds. All right, anything else to add to our fair use of committee session? Now moving to the old and new business area, starting with item eleven, which is sort of an eleven A and eleven B now, as you've been given the additional packet of material there from regarding the resolution to set a public hearing and for this revenue purpose statement related to the franchise fee for Black Hills Energy, the account, the coordinating part of that is to determine what will the funds that are returned back from Black Hills Energy that are collected, what will those go to and how it is outlined, so there are a total of, I think it's eight, that IO code allows for eight different items, she has suggested four of them in here as ideas or whatever, and so you can change those, she's offering you the option if you didn't like those, there's the choices there under. Sorry, under the franchise fee account page where it says the revenue that listed there, that's your other choices. And then the other thing that is still available to be changed would be your property tax relief amount, that is also something you could change. Technically, if I understand this correctly, by already exchanging the lost for the franchise fee, that is technically property tax relief. Would that be an accurate statement? Because, maybe?
I don't know if I. No, I wouldn't say that.
Go that far? You know, I mean, obviously not. It's an exchange of.
If, basically, you're exchanging the sales use tax on natural gas for this one percent franchise fee. So customers are not gonna notice any difference on their bill, it's just a swap out one percent, one percent. The difference is the community gets a hundred percent of that one percent when you do a franchise fee, but if you, but the sales use tax goes to the county, the county has some formula and divises it out between the communities in that county. So that goes away and you get a hundred percent of the one percent. Did that, did that, did that help?
It's helpful.
Yes.
So we, we, we are voted on this one.
We read our ordinance related to setting up the franchise fee, which is still also on the agenda, that would be the next one to read, that second reading. But this then is the accompanying paper that explains the, where the funds will go. So we will have, one of this is to set a public hearing on that, approving the revenue purpose statement and then to approve the revenue purpose statement.
When, when can we vote on the second reading of the, the first one we voted on?
The second reading is tonight.
Okay.
Look at that. And then we do the, and then this, as you see the date, is the next date is the next meeting on September sixth for the public hearing, so that will just be there. So it's just a matter of if you want changes to the proposed revenue purpose statement here. She would do that, and then that's what we will put in and out as the public hearing and have it published, so that it reflects your changes tonight. The next meeting will be the public hearing for that, just like we did last time. And then would be the third reading of the ordinance.
We can, we can, we can do second and bypass third.
You could.
Yeah.
But we already have one more to anyway, because of this, so we might as well just tie them together here.
So that's, that's what we always do.
I know.
I would, do we need a motion to accept this resolution?
Yes, we need to do the first one, we'll need to be, make sure you're on the right.
You're doing number eleven first.
Yes, so we need to have the, read the resolution, set in public hearing this one. Put on your separate packet, Patricia. So resolution setting the public hearing on the proposed revenue purpose statement related to the franchise fee on energy providers operating in the city of Palina, Iowa. So I'm gonna need one of that and one for the actual. If you have any questions or comments, more on the, on the actual revenue purpose statement, where it says the funds would go. Money's in the account, shall be used for the purpose of inspecting, supervising, otherwise regulating the franchise approved by them. An excess amount of that, then it's just a matter of what on top of that, where do you want the funds to be used? So like I said, she, a minimum of twenty-five percent right now is used as property tax relief, then anything above, above that goes into the public purposes determined annually, which apparently we could change also, then the repair, remediation, restoration, cleanup, replacement, improvement of existing public improvements and publicly owned property, maintaining public safety, and helping police, so you could help, you could provide additional funds for our fire, ambulance, police departments, you could help put into roads, streets always need repair, that's always an option that's never funded well enough, or economic development, which is also something we need to look at. So right now, it's got those listed as.
I will make the motion to approve the revenue purpose statement. At section thirty-six, three six, four point two, and four F, at section, and then three point four, three A of the Iowa code. I'm gonna second that.
Okay, so we're approving, making a motion to approve the revenue, proposed revenue purpose statement. So a motion, let's see. Second, I mean. And since that is a resolution, let's call roll call on that. So we can call roll call.
All right, roll call for that.
Greater votes.
Yep, all right. Yep, got it here. Um, Jean?
Yes.
Lexi?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
Let's call eyes, we're in the absent, Carol. That's approved. And now the separate motion will be to set the public hearing, a resolution setting the public hearing related to that as of September, as for September sixth, twenty twenty-two at five thirty PM. And we have Lexi again.
Also.
And Jay. To set the public hearing related to the proposed revenue purpose statement related to the franchise fee on energy providers operating in the city of Palina, Iowa, to be set as of September sixth, twenty twenty-two at five thirty PM. We've been seconded, do we have any further discussion? Questions? Let's go call for a roll call vote on that.
Jean?
Yes.
Lexi?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
All eyes, we're in the absent. That resolution is passed as well, okay, so now we're to the second reading of the ordinance to allow Black Hills Energy to collect the one percent franchise fee for the city of Palina. Hopefully it's still back in your packet, I believe, toward the back here, no? Yes. And we're establishing a franchise fee on energy providers operating in the city of Palina, Iowa. The whole thing, because we've done this a few times, but anyone would like to motion for that approval of the second reading?
We'll make a motion for approval of the second reading.
Second reading by Jean.
On second.
Second by Lexi. To consider this the second reading of the ordinance establishing a franchise fee on energy providers operating in the city of Palina, Iowa. Any further discussion, questions? Alex, follow.
Jean?
Yes.
Lexi?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
With all eyes, we're in the general is absent. Second reading is complete. The third reading and the public hearing and approval of the revenue purpose statement, then to complete that process at our next meeting on September sixth. Moving on to our agenda item thirteen, the authorizing. The authorizing of bank signatures here. This just allows the four of us to elect it and two employees to make that. My absence, Mayor Protem would have permission to sign. And Scott is your primary now and Whitney will be your secondary. So it's a resolution of the City Council of the city of Palina authorizing signatures for payment of, of city funds. These four individuals be authorized to draw or sign city checks for payment of city funds for the orderly administration of city business, for payment of legal demands against the city and execute signature cards at the official depository in the bank. In the absence of the mayor, the mayor Protem is authorized. And the absence of the city clerk manager, the deputy clerk is authorized to draw. Just puts the order of authorization into play here. The full staff. Any questions on that or whether to make a motion?
So Scott and Whitney would just be doing the checks the whole time?
No, no. No, one of each.
Scott and Whitney and...
And New York Carol.
I'll make a motion to approve the signatures on resolution.
Okay, we have a motion by Jean to accept the resolution of the City Council of the city of Palina authorizing signatures for the payment of city funds. Do I hear a second?
All second.
Motion by Jean, second by Jay.
Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment to this resolution.
That's considered.
The, the amendment one, previous to the resolution, my amendment would be amendment one, in absence of the city clerk and/or deputy clerk, the mayor or mayor Protem will be authorized to draw or sign city checks for the payment of city funds for the orderly administration of city business. What, excuse me, what this would do is it would make it so the city clerk and the deputy clerk would always do the checks unless there was an absence by the city clerk and the deputy clerk, then the mayor and the mayor Protem would be able to do the checks after that. If there was, if the clerk, if the city clerk and the deputy clerk were absent.
Is that, did you ask Tisha about that? Do you have that from me?
No, I did not.
I was gonna, we gotta make sure we have. That would be my only question is to make sure that is, that was probably something maybe in here that might say that or Iowa code that I don't have all my rights. So do you want to make the set resolution tonight or do you want to have her clarify with this wording and revise it for presentation?
Well, either this amendment has to be seconded or it would fail.
I will second it.
Now there can be discussion on the amendment.
So you're saying that if Scott and Whitney are both gone?
If one of them are gone, then the pro mayor or the mayor will sign checks then.
Both of them's gone.
Right, but right now the amendment is that Scott and Whitney just sign the checks because they're in the office full time. And then if one of them are gone, then the mayor and pro mayor will sign the checks.
What I'm concerned about is this, this resolution, the way it's worded is that anyone could write the checks at any time. Anyone.
Is that what it says? Read that first.
It still requires two signatures.
Yeah, still requires two signatures.
That would be your, still wanted.
And then read that again, the, what you wrote, read first.
Oh, I'm starting here. Now it, yeah, it just says in the absence of the mayor and mayor Protem is authorized to draw or sign. And in the absence of the city clerk, the deputy clerk is authorized to sign. So it was always my understanding that it had to be an employee and an elected official. That's why I think it's a law of war. But I did not generate this, so I don't know where this came from. I don't know if it came from Tisha or didn't know it.
I think that's the ordinance, that, is there an ordinance that says that?
I don't know where it says that, but as long as it says that we get them.
Because it doesn't say in this resolution that if it would take two people. Unless I'm missing something.
You're saying it says mayor or, I just assumed it was meaning mayor or, one of those two and one of those two is how it looks to me, if that's what I, I don't know, except where this, who drafted this document.
No, no, I don't. I know Whitney pulled it out, but I don't know where she got it from.
It's that or, I mean, I know we're all on signature card, but that's as far as I know, that's where the knowledge goes. So it might be a question of either Tisha or at the bank.
So do our checks right now require two signatures?
I think so. The checks and now it's a factor. I don't know where I can find it, that's in here.
It kind of reads that either Scott or Whitney. Or the one's primary, one's a signer, and then, but the co-signer, the one should be the mayor, if she's not there, then it'd be the mayor Protem. Isn't that what it says? But then it says, like you said, Steve, up above says, the following four individuals are authorized to draw or sign checks, bucks of the funds. And then down below it says, in absence, who would sign if they were gone?
Correct.
Now, right now, Scott signs checks and then the mayor initials them? Is that how it goes or do you just check it? Who, who's the second or are you second?
On the check, it says the mayor.
So, yeah, so this has some confusing wording in it.
Yeah.
It doesn't really say that one elected official and one employee should sign.
No, but they have it kind of set up that way, but it doesn't say that.
Doesn't really specify that.
No. It just has it broken down to where if Scott is here, then Whitney can sign, and if Brendan is not here, then Carol can sign. That's all it says. But the top part just allocates that these four are able to sign.
Right, but the resolution should be worded, worded accordingly now. Because that resolution is not worded. It says the following four individuals are authorized to draw or sign six checks.
But then down below it says, in absence of the mayor, then the mayor Protem is for her, and then for Scott, then Whitney is. It breaks it down there though.
To me, this resolution reads that the mayor and the mayor Protem could sign the checks and that would be okay, but it's really not.
Shouldn't it be in there something about?
We need one employee and one elected official.
One elected official, is that what you have, you want, or in your thing, or what was that, what did that read?
You read that it should be Scott and Whitney sign the checks.
But they, they have, they have to, they have to, they have to co-sign it though.
And then if one of them are gone, then they sign.
Right, you, you have to initial the check or something, no?
No, it has, the check has mayor under that term, that's all. I just know previously that's, I signed one, she signed the other one. That's all I know from my brief history since January. And I assume that's one, previously it was done a little bit differently, still two people technically were on there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but it was, it was, it was never the clerk and assistant, deputy clerk, it was, it was the mayor and mayor Protem.
I don't think, I don't think Whitney was on there until, remembering we had to add her as a signer to come on the bank, you guys approved that.
Right.
So that she could sign at the bank to sign the second with.
Well, do we need to take this time?
We used to have a stamp for the mayor.
Yeah, yeah, they used to stamp your name.
They'd say you stamped your name on there.
But then she got to initial behind, are they supposed to initial behind your stamp? Did they, did they stamp that? No?
I don't know.
I don't know. That's what I was wondering, when you stamp something, usually you have to initial it behind, you're the one that stamped it, right, Jean? Wouldn't you think that would be?
Yeah.
Because whenever I...
I guess, you know, I had a Mike's signature stamp.
Yeah.
At the co-op, but he was always present when I was stamping the checks with his name on it, like for Patrick's checks.
Yes.
Yeah, it was supposed to be in every time or in unnecessary reasons is when the stamp was supposed to be.
I think, I think that's a good idea though, that it should be initial to be somebody stamping your, your name to it, because it's not actually your signature, it's a, there's a stamp and somebody putting on it.
So we need to vote on that amendment if, if it's, if it's correct or if it's not.
Do you want, do you want this to go back and have her reword this, first one?
Well, we have to vote on the amendment.
Okay.
And then you either vote.
Well, if we vote on the amendment, then this, this is no longer, because you, you, we, well, we have a second on this one though. Yeah. We've had a second, because I second this one.
Right.
And you want discussion, he amended it.
Right, well, you can't amend something if you don't have a second on it.
And I second it.
So if, if you, if the, if the purpose of this is to have the mayor sign and Scott sign, then that's fine. But it needs to be worded that way and then that amendment would, that amendment would not work.
So it seems to me you're asking, yes, either this needs to be clarified.
Yes.
By Tisha or the bank, who needs to? Because I just assume that because that's how it happened working, but you're right, it does not really say it. It's implied but not explicit, implicit, yeah, so.
But your amendment, your amendment said that only Scott and Whitney would be authorized to sign.
Right.
But we can't add that because the mayor's got to sign.
Where does it say that though? Like, does it say that in our handbook that somebody can, does the mayor have to sign?
Do you, are you, does she, you're supposed to sign?
That's just, that's just how it's been in the ed.
Oh.
But it doesn't say that in the ordinance or in?
It doesn't say, it doesn't say in the ordinance that you, that you were saying.
Right, that's what we're saying, we need to find that out.
Yeah, let's find this out.
Yeah, so I'm not going to tell you which way to vote, but we have to vote yes or no on this amendment first, did that take care of the amendment?
Well, I think we don't, we vote, vote down or send it back to Tisha and have her find out what we really need for legally to, on that, on the first one.
So I will call for a vote on the amendment that Steve presented, amendment one. That is a change or an addition to the resolution, an amendment to the resolution saying in the absence of the city clerk and/or deputy clerk, the mayor or mayor Protem will be authorized to draw, then or sign city checks for payment of city funds, or the orderly administration of city business.
Can a person who brought resolution forward vote no?
It's confused.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or you withdraw, or you also withdraw your...
That's what we'll have to do with it.
So that would take it all off the table if you was...
Yeah.
It would be a tie with an American.
America's total.
But we have to vote because of the second.
Yes.
Because you'll get a second when it drops. So we have to vote first on Steve's amendment first.
Correct, yeah. On Steve's amendment first.
Okay, so are we prepared for that? Now, discussion, I read it again. Do we understand what we are doing? Okay, we are going to, all in favor of Steve's amendment to the resolution presented, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I heard all nays. Amendment fails, is the proper term. So now we are back to the resolution of which it has a spurt, a motion by Jean and a second by Jay. And now it is to discussion again, or withdraw if you choose.
We can withdraw it?
We then need to table or take action to...
I can withdraw my resolution? I want to withdraw my resolution.
Do I have to withdraw my second? Okay.
So we have withdrawn the motion, we could, can I entertain a motion then to table and?
I will make the motion to table the resolution of the authorized bank signatures.
Until?
Until the next meeting, until we figure it out. Until we talk to Tisha.
Upon further, upon the council, okay?
Yes.
Okay. On the, let me try to summarize that, Lexi. Lexi made the motion to table the presented resolution of the City Council of the city of Palina authorizing signatures for payment of city funds to be tabled until the next meeting of September 6th to include legal counsel before being brought back to the council for approval. Do I have a second?
All second.
Whatever, go ahead, Jay.
All second.
Okay. That was Lexi, then Jay.
Yep.
Okay, is there any discussion on the tabling of the resolution of the City Council of the city of Palina authorizing signatures for payment of city funds? Then here and now I will call for a vote to table, all in favor of tabling the resolution of the City Council of the city of Palina authorizing signatures for payment of city funds until the next meeting to include legal counsel, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. All ayes. Motion carries, drops, so that is a motion withdrawn successfully. Okay, first you are, last motion is regarding to approve the groom trail system for the O'Brien County snow tractors. You have the letter and the map, and that was the extent of the information we were given. Scott did try to reach out, someone just got this message, I see.
Yeah, no, there was no answer.
Just to see if it was, I was wondering if we were committing to a period of time or isn't just an annual thing? Have you guys done this before? Remember, it's the same, it's every, so as long as everyone just knows what we're getting into. And you see the map, which is, it says they come in on 10 and into town, right?
I'll make the motion to approve the O'Brien County snow tractors through to trail system request. All, any further discussion or questions related to that?
All ayes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All ayes, motion carries. That's Steve, then we're just gonna vote tomorrow. Okay, we do have some guests among us today. We are now at that point where you can address the City Council in five minutes per discussion topic. Charlie, are you up for that?
Yeah, we'll take five minutes, I'll be...
Ready when you are.
Trying to get my brains out here. We pick a, our thing is the appearance of our one and twelve pound. It seems to be going down together. The lack of rain hasn't helped, but that doesn't mean you can't mow your lawn for full two weeks. And I made a... The lack of rain hasn't helped. But that doesn't mean you can't mow your lawn for full two weeks. And I made a rough list of just a few addresses that are unsightly and right in the main traffic line. I give, I'll give address, but no names.
One, if you want, if you would prefer to just, you know, give us descriptions of that, and then you could give a, you know, give us the paper that, with your list of addresses on it.
Okay.
We could do that also.
I'll try to describe the list.
Okay.
Well, technically, the way we do it on the nuisance report is by name, not location.
By name and not address?
So.
Well, I'm not trying to hang anybody.
I know, it does feel different, but I just realized that's how we provided those. So you might as well stay in that, maybe if you would.
For starters, I, one rental. I was promised, or our committee was promised when I was on the council, that we want the person to paint this house. And they wouldn't at the time because he said, "I'm going to tear it down." Well, I've been off the council four years, oh, five years. And this house is still in a dilapidated, unsightly affair. Another house, that house is back this way. Another one's over here on the other side of town. They must have two dozen little trees growing in their front yard, about that high. One car's parked in drive, we had a flat tire, and it had been parked there for months. And the place looks like crap and all it does between weeds and mowing. Another back on this side of town. The weeds are just about as high as the windows on the house. Now, you know, and this is where everybody drives by. That house, and, I mean, and people live in that house, and I don't think any of them are handicapped or disabled. And no reason you can't get out there and do a little bit. If they don't want flyer beds, then knock all the weeds down, run a lawnmower. I mean, it'd be better than just let everything grow wild. In the same areas, another, another place. They've done work on the house. It might have been a work in progress a year or two ago. They've tore siding off and pumped insulation in the wall and plugged the holes, and that's how it's left in addition to the weeds. Another place we looked at, this has been an ongoing problem for years. This person seems to move from one location to another and take a ton of junk with them. And wherever they go, it doesn't take long, and they've got a bunch of trucks and tractors and whatever you want to call it, stacked up. And still have stuff at another location, both of them in town. And there's no reason this person can't, if they want to collect a bunch of crap, buy forty acres out here in the country someplace, and they can take it all out there where it doesn't bother anybody. Then this, and I'll give a name for it, American State Bank out there where the ATM machine is. That's pretty sad. There's no reason somebody can't go out there, spend fifteen minutes and pull the weeds up, don't wait, spray them, kill them, whatever. I mean, I don't walk too good on gravel myself, so why, I've got this little round-up sprayer that's battery-operated. I put a equipment on a lawnmower, and I go around and spray the gravel. I've got it pretty well under control.
Works.
So, I mean, I'd have to test it out. I mean, this is just some of the places in town. How we completely, I don't know. One house that I didn't put on here, it's been a stick in my craw for fifteen years, probably. Still unlivable, hasn't been for fifteen to twenty years. I was in the house when I was on the council, and I lived kind of next door to the place. The reason I was in there is because I mowed the lawn myself. And I went in to, to talk to the guy, and he was, we're actually working on it then. I said, "I'll tell you what I'll do." I said, "I'll go to the back for you and keep the city off your back as long as you're making progress." I think progress stopped about the day I stopped talking. I don't think there's been a thing done in the house since. It's, I think the house is in good bones. But it needs to be stripped down to the studs and then rebuilt. I suggested years ago that the city take possession of the thing, sell it to somebody for a dollar, give them two years to finish it and make it livable. Before they could start work, they'd have to come up with an insurance bond that would cover the total amount of the repairs before they start work. Then if they didn't have it done at a deadline, they lost possession of it, the city took it over, took the bond money, finished it, then they sold it. That went over like the level of. But I mean, I, I, you know, if we're going to make this town a much something, with each individual, we've got to take pride in it and do something about it. You drive around a country. And look at the progress in a lot of towns. It's not happening here. I'm afraid that our town's going to keep going.
Thank you, Charlie.
And we're going to be like Larrabee.
Thank you for that, and I know the Nuisance Committee has heard your comments, and they would be willing to probably talk to you outside of this and take your list and address those. I think many of them have been addressed or are in the process of being addressed, and also maybe fruitlessly, as you mentioned. So we will keep working toward that, because we all want the same thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Can council comment? We do not need to address comments made by in open meetings, we do not take any action on what we state, but you can make any other comments as well right now.
I have a question.
Are you on the open opportunity to address the council, your five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have, I hope to equip questions. My first one is for me. Well, and the crosswalks, they look great. Help me understand the traffic code, please. When crosswalks go in, are there supposed to be warning signs posted for drivers?
I don't think it's a requirement, no.
Is it best practice?
Probably, yeah.
That was one of my questions. The other one was, when John was here last time, did I understand him right that he had not been paid since May for the website?
I don't know, did he leave his statement? I don't have his statement in front of me.
Yeah, I don't, I, for some reason, he was saying that he hadn't been paid since May.
He has, he's waiting to have his discussion. He did not respond to me about meeting.
Okay, so.
That's why he's not on the agenda yet.
Well, the point, my concern is, if he's correct about not being paid since May. Can't be was, was on the June claims, which were approved without exception. I would offer, I guess, that the council looked into that, and if it was approved, I think he would have to pay that. Just an observation, and if he's, again, if he's correct. That's all, that's all I have.
Okay, is anyone else?
I, I mean, I can respond to that. I think if we, if we approved to pay John, he provided services at that point. We had an agreement with him, whether it was verbal or written. I think he deserves to get paid, and we need to pay him for that.
So do you have the?
There's a check.
Have we, have we?
There's a check.
Have we seen it?
It has not been sent yet. I was hoping to meet with him today so I could give you that update today, but he apparently is not available today.
Well, if that, if that hasn't happened, we approved it, so we need to get him paid.
We can mail it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. We were, Charlie was talking about getting stuff done. If you have a building permit, you have to look at one a year to do it. What if you started and you don't finish it? Does that permit say it has to be done in a certain amount of time, or?
I, I was looking on some of those last week, and all I could find where it said, construction need to be, I think it was, construction needed to commence within, within a year, within twelve months. I can't remember how it was worded.
Okay, it has to be started within a year.
Yeah, it said, yeah.
But I think if their building permit is done, they may have to reapply for another.
We'll apply for another one then.
If it's not.
If it's not started.
Yeah, yeah, if it's not started.
But if it's not done there, still okay?
The way, the way I read it, it just, I mean, I couldn't, unless somebody else can point me in the direction of the look. But the one I saw, it said, "Construction has to commence within."
But there's no timeline in it.
I didn't, I didn't see anything on that one. But the comment was also made, you know, just like, things are hard to get, you know, with the supply chain. And he was having a hard time getting a carpenter lined up, you know, to, to finish the construction, so.
You were questioning on a certain one as well?
If, if it was the same person, I don't know, that's just the individual I spoke with.
It was, it's a place that, I won't say name, that we had quite a dealing with. He had two buildings in, and he wanted to do something, and it just, it just sits there.
Maybe you can ask him, and you guys could.
Yeah.
If anything needs to be perceived.
I'll talk to Lexi and Steve a lot, too. Some people have run to my attention about times and stuff.
Make sure that's recorded here. Okay, anyone else have any comments? What's this for?
That's electric station.
Okay, okay.
Let's just, theirs is inside the, inside the fence of the substation. I just gave you that just to show. I want to know their.
Okay.
Do you have room in that substation, do you think?
We can do the same.
Yeah, there would be.
And.
We'd have to add.
Did we come up with that somebody's going to get a hold of DTR and ask about getting funding for this?
I, I could talk to.
Maybe or Scott could talk to them, maybe. That would help us. But we need to do it.
Any other council comments? If not, do we entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'm again.
Let's second that.
Motion Steve made a second to adjourn. Questions or comments before adjournment? Here and now, call for a vote on favor of adjournment. Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Leaving adjournment, seven, five.
Why don't you, it's on light. Scott is at the back, do you want?
Yeah, send it out.
Are you part of your commissioner board?
My, my sentence, Lexi.
So cheesy.
I did a walk-in on the side of the wall.
Okay.
We did, we'll come back to that. It's not good.